All right, open the meeting, comment from the public at this time. Anybody who wish to address the board, they do so, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. That being said, we'll move on to the minutes for the previous meeting.
Make motion to approve the minutes. The regular meeting minutes of March 7th and the budget meeting of March 13.
Second. Moved by trustee Martin, second by trustee Moore, any discussion? There be no discussion, all in favor vote by the usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried, bill. You all have a copy yet, any additions, are there?
No.
You'll do these.
Can't take a couple thousand off?
You'll do these.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Moved by trustee Moore, second by trustee Martin, any discussion? There be no discussion, all in favor vote by the usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried, correspondence.
The first letter is dated March 1st, and it's from the Fourth of July Celebration Committee. Dear friends, the Fourth of July Committee is planning the 2016 Community Celebration. This year is the 56th celebration, and is sponsored by American Legion Post #912 in Rousset Point, New York. The festivities will be held Friday through Sunday, July 1st through 3rd. The street parade begins at 6:00 PM on Sunday, July 3rd, followed by fireworks show in dusk. In the past, our committee has been fortunate, local businesses have generously made donations to help us host weekend entertainment, fireworks, and a decades-old tradition of the best Fourth of July Parade in the North Country, helping make the weekend a premier summer event in our community. Again this year, we would like to put on the best celebration in the North Country and hope that you will consider a donation to help us continue this tradition. Our sponsors receive recognition on our advertisements when donations are received by May 20, 2016. If you wish to contribute or have questions, please call, says Carol Hanfield, that will be me, at 297-5502, or Kiana Gilroy, at 297-5441. Donation should be made payable to Fourth of July Celebration, Montgomery Post #912, Legion Home Box 63, Rousset Point, New York. Your support of this event, interest in our community and its residents is truly appreciated. Sincerely, Kiana Gilroy. Next is a letter from New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, Division of Environmental Permits. Dear applicant, please be advised that your application for a DDC permit is complete and a technical review has commenced. Notice and the opportunity for public comment is required for this application, and closes a notice of complete application for your project. Please have the notice published in the newspaper identified below once during the week of March 21st, 2016, on any day Monday through Friday, is the Press Republican. On that notice of complete application, that information presented between the horizontal lines on the enclosed page should be published. Do not print this letter or the information contained below the second horizontal line. Please request the newspaper publisher to provide you with proof of publication for the notice. On receipt of the proof of publication promptly forward into this office, you must provide the proof of publication before a final decision can be rendered on your application. You are responsible for paying the cost of publishing the notice in the newspaper. Notification of this complete application is also being provided by this department and the New York State DDC Environmental Notice Bulletin. This notification does not signify approval of your application for permit. Additional information may be requested from you at a future date if deemed necessary to reach a decision on your application. Your project is classified major under the Uniform Procedures Act. Accordingly, a decision is due within 90 days of the date of this notice unless a public hearing is held, which may extend this timeframe. If a public hearing is necessary, you will be notified. If you have any questions, please contact me at the above address or phone number above. And I've attached free information what the public notice will look like, and I just need permission to republish this, and we will have the notice this.
Make a motion to publish the legal notice?
Second.
Moved by trustee Martin, second by trustee Moore.
Thank you.
Any discussion? There be no discussion, all in favor vote by the usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And next is a letter dated March 15th from the Champlain, the subject is Champlain-Hudson Power Express Transmission Project. Dear Sir Madam, in a letter recent, a letter sent out on March 9th, 2015, Transmission Developers Inc. stated that the Albany meeting to discuss the navigation risk assessment for the Champlain-Hudson Power Express would take place on March 23rd at the headquarters of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation at 625 Broadway and 1129 from 11:00 AM until 2:00 PM. The meeting will actually be held from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. All locational information in the letter still applies. Transmission Developers Inc. regards this error and looks forward to meeting with you. Please contact Mr. Bob Harrison, Vice President, President of Engineering and Construction via email, if you have any questions about the meeting or the navigation risk assessment. Your attention to this matter is greatly appreciated. Thank you for your assistance with respect to this important effort.
I'd like to see Doug and Jean go, I can't call to start, Jean is expecting first. So it's a one-day trip, the only expenses would be mileage because village car is gone.
It could be more than just that, George, you gotta pay Doug too.
We have, but it's important that we do.
I still don't see the need to go, the other founders. In your paper today, it said the outfall line, sewer outfall line is gonna be.
That was brought up at the meeting down there on the 23rd, and they weren't even aware of it.
What's the outfall line got to do with anything?
They hit it.
They're gonna hit it in that post?
I don't know, John, I don't know any answers. They're supposed to come up here, I think next month, and meet with our people.
They're going down the center of the lake. The turbidity that they're gonna cause in the lake is gonna be far less than a 30 mile an hour south wind, now? This is just costing money for nothing.
That's your opinion, sir.
Well, my opinion counts, just as well yours does.
Right, and that, my opinion is, and it's important that we attend.
Well, then maybe should be a board decision.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Okay. Make a motion to send Jean.
You don't want to send Doug?
I think Jean, she's not at the fore, and it's.
Are you gonna say how long?
She's never been there.
The third, or the thing they're gonna say is, how close is it coming, they're gonna watch, make sure.
I agree 100 percent.
I'll second that motion to send Jean.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? I want Doug to go because he knows all about our outfall and everything else, and it should've been at the last meeting, when he presented it to him.
Well, I see the bill in there for $2,000, is that for that meeting?
No, you better take a look at the.
I asked at the last time, when you said he was gonna go, and he might not even charge, but everything seems to be kept secret.
I said, what's the bill for? Not kept secret, the bill comes in, you're entitled to look at it.
I gotta find it here, so. Okay, well, it makes no difference, you got a motion, you're seconded.
Any other discussion? Have any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, I have a letter from the Montgomery Post #912, American Legion, dated March 25th. Rousset Point, Fourth of July Committee, we're cordially invite you to participate in our annual parade, this is the 56th celebration. The parade will be held on Sunday, July 3rd at 6:00 PM. Lineup will begin at 4:00 PM at Delagarde's parking lot across from the fire station. Commercial entries are limited to two vehicles per entry. Prizes will be awarded in each of the categories for the entry, who best represents the theme of our celebration as follows. First and second places to adult marching, junior marching, band, float, and fire apparatus. And first place to antique fire truck more than 25 years old, antique car more than 25 years old, and horse. There will be one overall winner. Only one prize per entry will be awarded. Please see the enclosed parade guidelines and return the registration form to American Legion Post #912, P.O. Box 63, Rousset Point, or fax 2973818, or drop off at the village office by June 20th. Any questions, please call 297-5502. By returning this form as soon as possible, you greatly assist the committee in planning the most appropriate lineup. When you arrive for lineup, you will receive your assigned number. Please proceed, proceed to the spot designated by that number as quickly and orderly as possible. Your cooperation with committee lining up for parade is greatly appreciated. Hope to see you in Rousset Point for the best Fourth of July celebration in the North Country. Sincerely, the Fourth of July Committee. And I can give this to our center clerk of the website, if people have this. And, not lastly, but next is a letter to the Village of Rousset Point. We, Keith Ashlight and Francella Wilson, are requesting the use of the Montgomery Street Pier Pavilion on June 25th, 2016, at 1:00 PM in the afternoon for our wedding ceremony. Sincerely, Francella and Keith.
Why would it need more approval for that?
It don't.
Just publish, sure.
Yeah.
This letter is on the.
Yes, yes.
And lastly, is a letter from Border Runners LLC to the Village of Rousset Point trustees.
Subject is permission for business use at Border Runners, 8 Lake Street, Rousset Point, New York. Border Runners would like to host regular events of car enthusiasts on the Border Runners location, 8 Lake Street, which would be a combination social event, commercial event, informal car show, and automotive parts swap. These meetings would be held at one weekend, on one weekend, Saturday or Sunday, to be determined, from about 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Events could be held weekly, but we'll start a few events to measure interest. Events could be held from May through October, depending on weather. Events would be free to the general public, but a small charge for show entrance and part swappers. Thank you, Rob LeMond. And I do know that he has been in touch with Clifford, so I suppose.
That is republic, no.
Pardon me?
We don't, that's just.
Just for.
Probably soon. It's gonna be out here real.
Yeah, I just wanna, I just try to generate some.
Yep.
Two people up in expensive tree box in the village.
Yeah.
And that's all I have, the correspondence.
Report of the mayor, trustees. Any permission for the clerk to publish a legal notice for a public hearing on the 2016-17 tentative budget on April 18, 2016?
I have my permission. Is that the one you're sent? You gave it to the board table?
Make a motion to.
We need a roll call on that. I don't think so.
I didn't hear of a second, I'm sorry.
Motion made by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Moore. Is there any discussion? There be no discussion, all in favor vote by the usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. That's it from being on the agenda until the end of the meeting. Trustee Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don't have anything tonight, but I do wanna thank, thank the Village of Rousset Point, and the good four years for me. Very appreciative to have served, and all that I have, sir.
Thank you, trustee Martin. Trustee Moore.
Yes, I want to thank the mayor, trustee Moore, trusty Treadwell, for years of service they gave, sure they enjoyed every minute of it. And did a good job.
Thank you, sir.
And also, Donna, before and after our next meeting, the phones, can you change that to the mayor, take care of, put you on, and then call the number, please?
Yes.
And, that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Moore. Trustee Ma.
I have nothing.
Thank you, trustee Ma, trustee Treadwell.
Just wanna thank the village residents for allowing me to serve for the last two and a half years. It's been, been fun, and learned, learned a lot, so I appreciate that, that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Treadwell. Clerk.
I have a report on the election results. There were 264 residents who voted by hand ballot and 14 absentee ballots, for a total of 278 ballots. For the position of mayor, there was one candidate for a two-year term. Daniel Letourneau received 134 votes by hand ballot and 11 absentee ballots, for a total of 145. There were four write-in votes. Tom Laundrie received nine votes. Joe Treadwell received 40 votes by hand ballot and one by absentee ballot, for a total of 41. Noel Heinrich received one vote. Amanda Racine received one vote. For the position of trustee, there were two candidates for two, two-year terms. Ben Arno received 184 votes by hand ballot and 10 by absentee ballot, for a total of 194 votes. Tom Dar received 155 votes by hand ballot and 10 votes, votes by absentee ballot, for a total of 165 votes. There were four write-in votes. Dale Changelo received one vote. Joseph Dumar received one vote. Brad Martin received seven votes. Joe Treadwell received two votes, respectfully submitted by Donna J. Bono. And next, the budget officer presented the 2016-17 tentative budget to the village clerk before the deadline of March 20th. Pursuant to the village law 5-5081, the village clerk must present the tentative budget to the Board of Trustees at a regular or special meeting by March 31st. Board of Trustees must review the tentative budget, and may make changes and revisions as deemed appropriate in accordance with village law 5-5082. I presented them to you this evening, and you all have them. And that's all I have, I'm out of breath, and lose members.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Ian.
Just a quick note, an update on the Barton LeJudas visit last week for the water plant evaluation. There were several of us that were present, Brian, Donna, Brian, Joe, and myself, the two representatives, from Barton and LeJudas Jr. And the question and answer led us to the final determination that even if we were successful as the village to secure the $2 million grant, which really is 60 percent of $2 million, the village is not in the financial position to accept any additional debt, and they would have to do so to pay the difference between whatever the grant award was and the $5 to $7 million that it would cost for a sand filtration plan. Those were preliminary dollar amounts that were provided. The follow-up email I submitted was a request for an opinion on refurbishing the current water plant, and I'm waiting for a response on that. And the board will have to reevaluate the final decision, directional decision.
We haven't paid them yet, correct?
I'm sorry?
We haven't paid them.
We have not.
I didn't shoot fire.
That, that was an alternative as well, we have not received any, anything yet. I don't know that I would quite call it firing, but diplomatic parting of the ways.
Did I hear you correctly when you said that we gotta pay 60 percent?
No.
Oh, no, 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 that's, that's.
The grant, they say a $2 million grant.
No.
But I believe that it was up to 60 percent of that $2 million that could be awarded. However, it doesn't appear that we would even qualify for that based on the fact that they claim, per census data, that the median household income in Rousset Point is higher than what is allowed for the qualifying criteria for the grant application. So we seem to have more negatives on our side in getting that grant, for being successful at it, so.
So if we did get it, it's still the village, you have to pay at least a minimum of $4 to $5 million.
Correct.
Right now, we're paying them $20 grant, they even look into this, that's the problem, we haven't paid them yet. Are we gonna pay them the $20 grant, and then, if it's not a refundable amount of money? Well, I think the contract said we could pay them up to date, for services they did.
Right.
No, if we say, okay, next week, you're done. You pay them up to what they deliver. What have they done? They've done nothing. That's what I said, we already have paid them. They have done absolutely nothing. What they did.
And if it looks like that, that we're not gonna qualify for the grant, and we can't afford to get $5 million, so what's the sense of doing any more research into it?
Well, the, the only other, the only other opportunity or reason would be for them to evaluate whether or not it's feasible and in our favor to rehab the current water plant. But, to me, I, I can ask for, excuse me, I can ask for them to produce the information that they have put together thus far, and I can provide it to the board, and if it's determined that the response is, we, we're done, we can't, we can't go any further, it's just not financially feasible for the village to go any further and terminate that feasibility
But we don't know if it's feasible to revamp the, the water plant we already have?
No, we're gonna have to do something with it anyways.
I'm sorry?
We're gonna have to do something with the water plant.
Correct.
Yeah, but how are you gonna know, what's the most feasible way to do that?
That's what they're checking on now.
Well, chances, chances of our, our qualifying for a grant for that are, are slim. That, we don't have the qualifying criteria to even qualify for a grant. We would have to do a wage survey and various other steps to prove that, that the median household income is much less. Otherwise, the grant is, it's awarded as a non hardship with a, a loan with an interest rate assigned to it.
So we just keep on running the water plant as is, that's what our, what our plan is?
Well, no, because there has been evaluation done up to this point as to what, what could possibly be done to automate it. That was something that Doug.
So, so they've already done some, some work to find out what it's gonna take to automate the existing plant?
Well, not, not Barton and LeJudas. It would not, they, they were mostly for the sand filtration plant.
So I guess I'd have to do what John said, I mean, if we're not gonna afford the money to build that new plant, then stop them tomorrow morning, like, don't go no further. We owe you something to this point, disfigure the bill, but let's just stop it, because we're not gonna be able to deal with $5 million.
Right.
What do they think? Say, I've done, I've sold you nothing.
I don't know if they've done, so, I'm just saying that, yeah, I mean, I was stopping, I was stopping tomorrow morning, calling and saying, you know what, that's over our heads, we can't afford that, and we're gonna go back to the.
Yeah. In, in your opinion, do you feel that's the best thing to do? You've been dealing with them, and are you happy with their performance?
I, I, I feel it is the best thing to do because it does not appear that we are going to be successful no matter which way it shakes out.
Take a motion to Barton LeJudas.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion? There be no, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
That's it for me, thank you.
Our son.
Getting back to your question regarding the, the earth science bill, that's for services rendered for the month of February, which included doing an EPA letter, on here is TDI, I don't know what TDI is.
That's that letter that, that we got from the, the EPA on finding us if we didn't do something.
You got work on here in regards to pumps, flow meters, and automation.
Was there a bell on deck for going out to that meeting? No?
No.
No. He thinks he's going to the next one, so.
No, he's gonna.
He built for that.
Call him tomorrow morning.
Believe me, he is not doing Yasadiq goodness of his heart.
The only other item I have is, is I just wanna remind our utility customers who have not come in to pick up their LED bulbs, we have bulbs still in your name, a lot of bulbs have been picked up, but the customers usually pay by mail or online, probably have not received theirs, so, just get the word out that, you know, your name's on the list, you're entitled to two bulbs.
Thank you. Brian?
Yes, just an update, we received the ramp from Stan Gesberger, it's in our shop. The guy's cut the composite today, but they're having a problem with screws, stripping out the aluminum. I don't know if you people, the trustees wanna see what we have, and if you're satisfied with it, but we had to order a different type of screw, so.
The original used to be real small.
For some reason, it's like a wing or something.
Yeah.
It's stripping out the aluminum, and it's not grabbing, it's not holding the composite down. But all the pieces are behind our shop, and the main ramp is inside on the, on the lift, so if you wanna see it, it's there. Like George said, tomorrow, the public works will be down here removing the ice, so, I don't know if any trustees ever seen that taken out of here, but it's all taken out by dump trucks and scooped up, it's quite a process to see. We'll be working on some storm drains, we're waiting for April 1st to do the street sweeping because we still have a couple small storms coming our way, so we might have to sand. I don't know who wants to hear the sand word, but there is a lot of sand out there, and I don't hear a storm working. Yeah, I'm gonna start picking up as of April, because our May pickup, people have been asking about the, the brush and the leaves, we usually do it around Mother's Day in May, so, somebody asked you, that's when we usually do the, the curb side pickup. Like I said, there's a few, there's not a lot of frost in the ground, so we wanna get some of these jobs done, and storm drains, the fire hydrant up on the end of Church Street in Chapman, we're gonna get that cut in. Jason's gone to school, she's leaving tomorrow, we'll be back Thursday, of course, we're off Friday. I gotta call in to Kurt Wilson to come up to start doing some more rehabbing in our substation on those breakers I've been working on, I wanna finalize them before warm weather I gotta call in also to the telephone company to start setting some poles out in 276, we got another problem out there today, and we need to start thinking about repoling that, it's time.
Oh, oh, 276?
No, we're gonna, there's about 10 I wanna do right now, we'll do about 10, the ones that are leaning, the short ones.
We got them, right.
What's that? Yeah, we have the poles off from Pratt Street, so we're gonna do, I'd like to set at least 10 out there. But, that's our schedule for the next week or two, so, if you have any questions, but I wanted to know that, let the board know, if you wanna see the ramp, it's, it's at the building, it's at the blue building.
Sure, thank you, Brian.
That's it, open the meeting to the, to the public at this time. Where, Tom?
George, Tom Dar, 14 Lilly Avenue, does the, does our government, police department have a police dog?
No.
You don't? Jean, do they have a police dog, are you not aware?
Do, they have.
Do we have a police dog?
No.
All right. Well, somebody might wanna check why Tyler's got a dog with him.
That's his dog.
Well, I know that, but if he puts it in the cruiser, it's our liability.
Liability in what fashion?
Excuse me?
Liability in what fashion?
If that dog is, is not in the professional capacity of the village, and that dog bites somebody, the village is gonna be liable. If it's a police dog, it's sanctioned by the village, and it's, it's put under the insurance policy.
He has been told that that's not protocol for the village to bring your dog to work.
Yeah, okay.
So, hopefully, that will be the case.
I just seen Tyler Saturday, and he had a dog with him.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, it's, it's not a, a, a re shift occurrence.
Oh, no, no.
Yeah, yeah.
Only one of your first ambitions when you get in, Tom.
Thank you.
Get a police dog.
The police dog?
Whatever he wants, he gets it.
I could see him with a dog here too, and we addressed it.
Yeah.
Any else? If not, it's my turn. I wanna thank the colleagues of Ross's Point for allowing me to be the mayor the last two years, I wanna thank the people that are sitting up here, it's been a pleasure. Carol Hanfield, who's been a godsend for years, she's gone. Donna, Jean, the treasure. Public Works people, people in the office down there, people at the rec center, people in the store plant, we just had an inspector in the store plant, everything, everything, satisfactorily. That was from the state of New York. My last comments are about the town of Champlain. I watched.
Oh, you did see the meeting?
What?
You did see the meeting?
I watched it. I'm very upset. I'm very upset because the town of Champlain put the blame for the high cost to their residents up there on the Village of Rousas Point. And the mayor, as long as the mayor is there, he will never see us connected to water. Well, this mayor and this board had absolutely nothing to do with this. It was done by the previous board. They voted out of it and nothing has been discussed since. And as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Markham was way out of line because he didn't present the facts. How can you sell to the residents of this village that we were going to pay 60% of their infrastructure and get nothing? So I believe we are putting a package together for the press because this, this is asinine as far as I'm concerned. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, and that's it. You won't see me again.